Dr. Larry Lithgow.
Yeah, just a couple of things in my update. Number one, we would like to thank our citywide PTO. They, it is a great partnership. Their reps, they meet on a monthly basis at a minimum. I know I attend their monthly meetings and just a big heartfelt thanks to them for their time and efforts as they volunteer in our 18 schools. Tonight, they actually brought cupcakes and cookies to our Board of Education. So, we thank them and we probably should be giving them cupcakes and cookies because of their time and effort. So, I just want to share that, that we appreciate them and that partnership as we work through and working stronger together. The School Board Recognition Week, we touched on that earlier. We had a board work session on the 4th of February with our Board of Education and we looked at our, what is our North Star and where are we going? And we want to ensure that our students graduate. And, you know, we've talked about J.C. Reed's, J.C.'s strong, different parts that all contribute toward ensuring that our students graduate. Our students do need to be able to read to be able to graduate. But as we raise the bar as a school district to be a premier school district, we had a great meeting with the board. And from that, fired up consulting, they came and worked with our board in that retreat. Then with our A.C. on the 18th, last week actually, we formulated from there our priorities, which we've talked about with learning for both staff and students, partnerships and stewardship that we've talked about for many, many years. Those continue to be our priorities. But from that, having SMART goals from that, and then we'll have action steps from that. Our next step is on the 3rd, I believe here, of March with our principals, our ACDC. It's our Administrative Council and District Council. From there, we'll be developing those SMART goals and those action steps from that. So, those will align with our buildings and ask them with their school improvement plans and their goals going forward and so we can have alignment as a district. So, we all know those are very important and then as way of a dashboard to monitor progress is all important. So, those are good things and the good things going forward ahead. So, that's all I have at this time with my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lithgow. Next, we have our Chief of Learning, Dr. Scarborough.
All right. I want to thank you all for letting me come and speak to you this evening. I know I don't get a chance to talk to you guys a whole lot, but this is CTE month, so what better time to come up here and talk to you a little bit about Nichols Career Center and what we do to help get our kids prepared for the workforce. So, I want to start off by thanking all of you for allowing us to stay in seat during the one week of closure that we did have. I can't stress enough how important it was for our students. As you know, a lot of our learning is very hands-on and it would be very hard to tear apart an engine and put it back together through a computer screen. So, we appreciate you guys putting trust in us to keep our kids safe and create opportunities even when it may not have been the most popular opinion. You guys trusted us to do our best to keep your kids safe, everybody else's kids safe. So, thank you for that. I do want a little disclaimer here. Some of these pictures are pre-COVID, so as you can see, some of them don't have masks. So, I thought I would throw that one out there before I got too far into this. But as I said, it is CTE month and I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time. I've got to learn how to use the, a CTE director not knowing how to use technology, that's embarrassing. So, as we know, February is CTE month and we'd like to invite you guys over to Nichols Career Center this week on Thursday at 11:00 a.m. to participate in a luncheon, just kind of hear a little bit more about our programs. I know Ms. Sappingfield sent out an invite for that a couple of weeks ago. So, if you all can attend, we'd love to have you. Our Culinary Arts Program always prepares good meals. I'm evidence of that. So, they feed me well. That's one of the perks of being a director at Nichols Career Center. But again, we hope you guys can make it. I know you guys are busy and have other things to attend to, but we like to celebrate our students, we like to celebrate our staff and our building and the great things we do for kids. So, just to give you a little bit of information on career technical education in our nation as a whole, career and technical education or what used to be called VOTEC, as a lot of us remember, didn't always get the best stigma. There was always a stigma that it was kind of where kids who don't want to go to college go. Well, that could be no further from the truth as the data suggests 78% of our kids actually go on to college and carry on with post-secondary education. So, a lot of our kids are, I tell you what, come by sometime, talk to these kids. It's amazing what they can tell you and it's way over my head many times. Now, we have robots and all sorts of things that, well advanced over Nintendo that I was used to growing up. So, right now, a person with a CTE-related degree can earn $4,000 to $19,000 more a year than a person with a humanities degree. So, a lot of people think these kids won't make any money once they leave our Career Center. That could be no further from the truth. A lot of these kids that go out and travel for welding, you know, healthcare, they're making pretty good money. I wish I would have thought about my career choices a little more in high school once I see what these kids can do and they come back to visit us with these nice $50,000 trucks, you know, when they're out welding. So, also, CTE currently serves 94% of high school students. So, as you know, we offer 12 programs on the Nichols Career Center side. Used to say across the street, but now we're all one building here. So, we also have CTE programs in comprehensive high schools in Cap City and Jeff City as well, business, FACS, Project Lead the Way. We'll talk about some of the Nichols, the programs that are housed under Nichols here in a second, but a lot of opportunities for our kids. I think that's something that we can be proud of, something a lot of more rural schools can't say that they provide their students. So, when our students are able to build robots and tear apart a car and do cool things like that, it's something special. Average high school graduation of someone coming through a CTE program is 93%, whereas the average on others, just in general, it's 80%. So, the national average is, the data suggests that those students who participate in a career in technical education or VOTEC program are much more highly likely to graduate on time. And part of that is these kids learn different. They're not your, you know, your head in the math book, you know, Ernest Hemingway type of people, okay? They want to get in there, get their hands dirty. They want to learn something by getting in there and doing it. So, also, health occupations, which is a very broad employment industry in our area, accounts for 12 of the 20 fastest-growing occupations within our country. Obviously, we've learned that the hard way going through this COVID pandemic. You hear it every day, people are looking for vaccinators, they're looking for healthcare professionals all the time. Our health science students who earn a CNA while they're in our building, they're getting scooped up before they can even graduate and walk across the stage. So, I think that's something that's not only great for the parents to have a livable, their student to have a livable wage once they graduate high school, but also the student themselves to, you know, someone want to get out there and make money. You can't blame them and they do a pretty good job of making money through a lot of our high-demand programs. So, most of you know this, I know, but we actually service 11 school districts within our local area. Here is the logos of all 11 of our school districts. Obviously, J.C., we have three ascending schools. J.C., we have Cap City students, Jefferson City High School students and J.C.A.C. students who come to our building from the Jefferson City School District. But we also cater to California, Jamestown, Calvary Lutheran, Elias, Blair Oaks, Southern Boone, Russellville, Fatima, South Callaway and New Bloomfield as well. So, a lot of these kids are in rural areas where normally they wouldn't have access to a robot, they wouldn't have access to, you know, the equipment, the high-dollar equipment that we can provide to them to work on so they can be prepared. So, you know, it's a little intimidating for a Jamestown or New Bloomfield kid to come into Nichols Career Center and see the big buildings, but once they're here and they're comfortable, they learn a lot of great things and they're really happy that they're there. So, here's the 12 programs that we offer at Nichols Career Center. Agriculture, welding, HVAC, culinary arts, health science, broadcast media, automotive technology, auto collision, computer technology, mechatronics, which is a little bit of robotics and a little bit of industrial electronics, graphic design and building trades. And you know, building trades has a great partnership with our River City Habitat for Humanity where we build a house for them. One important thing that we stress to the community and our students and our parents, every single one of our, all of our programs are two-year programs except health science. So, health science is the only one that's a one-year program and that's only available to seniors. But every student that comes through our program will leave with one of these credentials and they're known as IRCs, Industry Recognized Credentials, that they then leave with. And these are credentials that will get them an entry-level position and a pretty good-paying job. We just got ACF accreditation through the American Culinary Foundation, ASE for Auto Tech, CNA obviously, Test Out, I-Cars are Auto Collision. So, all these AWS, which is our welding certification, all these students will take a TSA or Technical Skills Assessment at the end of their senior year and earn, hopefully all of them, most of them will earn this certification that will help them to be, to get one step ahead of the game when it comes to getting that first job. Now, most of these are entry-level stuff, but there's a lot of our advisory committee members and industry partners who, this is what they're looking for. We didn't just pick something out of the blue. These are the things they're saying, these kids need to know this, okay? And if they come in with this, then I know they know it. So, just one benefit that our students have, obviously the high school diploma is important as well, this is just another stackable credential for them to earn that extra money and get that first job. Again, a lot of them move on to post-secondary as well. So, having these already done and in their back pocket creates less cost for them once they move on to post-secondary as well. Not only do we offer the technical skills portion of the students' education, we also have career and technical student organizations. So, we call them CTSOs. One of those you're probably really familiar with and that's FFA. Everybody knows about FFA, you know, growing up, a lot of people participated in that themselves. But we also have Skills USA. FFA is for agriculture programs, Skills USA is for technology and industrial-type programs. They're student organizations where these students can go out and not only compete against other schools and show off their skills, but they're also leadership opportunities for them where they can participate in job interview skills, public speaking. So, I kind of like that quote, "Technical skills get you the job, soft skills get you the career." So, you can get a job by proving you can do the job, but you can't stay in a job and make a career out of it unless you are a good team player, you can think critically, you're a good leader, you can communicate effectively. How many of us have heard somebody from industry, maybe yourselves, saying, "Man, we just can't hire good people. We can't, you know, this kid can't get off his phone, you know? They don't know how to shake a hand, they don't know how to talk to a professional." So, those are the things we try to implement in our programs to not only emphasize the competition and the fun side of things, but also those workplace readiness skills that are so, so important. A lot of people, a lot of employers say, "Heck, we can teach them the technical skill, we can train them once they get here, they just got to be a good employee." So, I thought that was good to kind of emphasize how important those are to us and we're really trying to do more of that. COVID didn't allow us to do a lot of that. We used to do mock interviews where we brought people in to do mock interviews and college and career fairs. Obviously, we couldn't do that this year, but hopefully we'll be able to get some more of that going once we get on the downhill slope of this wonderful pandemic. One other important factor that we provide to our kids, sorry, I know it's really small to read up there, but the second year of their, their spring semester of their second year in each program, they're able to participate in an internship. So, we have over 50 internship partners there. That's not all of them, we have more. A lot of them probably look familiar to you. We have 33 students out right now on internship. As we know, it's easy or it's nice to learn the technical skill in the shop, but you need to get out there and work on real cars, real people. You know, we have kids out in the nursing homes at St. Mary's, at Capital Region. There's just some things you can't learn behind the school walls. You got to get out there and get your hands dirty, so to speak. So, a lot of kids are out there, 33 of them, right now, learning how to apply their trade. And I always tell kids, it can either go really bad or really well, but either way you're going to learn that you either don't like it or you love it. So, we think this is another important layer to the opportunities we give to kids. So, what lies in the future? Just some ideas we're throwing out there and we're hoping to kind of explore. None of these are even started to be put in motion yet, but just to let you know, kind of, we're thinking bigger and better. We're always looking for new high-demand programs to offer our students. We would like to offer a second-year Health Sciences at some point and try to provide them with stackable credentials on top of the CNA. The CNA is good, it's a great way to get your foot in the door at a long-term care facility or other medical industries, but we'd like to give them some stackable credentials like phlebotomy, EKG specialist, certified medical technician, some of those stackable credentials is what they call them, to make them more employable and some transferable skills that they can do in any setting. Also, potential new programming that we've kind of thought about, early childhood development or early teaching professions. We know finding teachers is hard right now, so we're always looking for ways to help with local employment needs. Also criminal justice, we're the hub for the Missouri Highway Patrol, Cole County Sheriff's Department. So, those are just some ideas that we're kind of tossing around. I know funding and space and a lot of those things kind of tie into that. But in case you're wondering what else is out there, we always want to focus on those high-demand careers. So, yeah, that's, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of kind of what we did, what we're doing for CTE month and just kind of celebrate what we're doing and what we're excited about for our kids. And again, thank you for allowing us to continue to teach our kids in seat and provide them with that opportunity. And I'm, yeah.
First off, Cody, thank you very much for all that you do for our schools and for the kids. That is outstanding. You're seeing a shift, a lot more kids are going into CTE. So, my question, are we able to meet the demand now or are we turning kids away because we don't have the space or the program?
Yeah, so the way we do that, we are pretty competitive. We only have a certain amount of slots for our ascending schools and J.C. schools. All of our ascending schools that you saw up there come in the morning and then our J.C. schools, Jefferson City High and Cap City, come in the afternoons. Due to the nature of our business, we don't like to have more than 15 kids in a shop just because there's a lot of things that can hurt people. So, you get too many kids in there that, you know, we want to make sure that we're not overwhelming the teacher with more than they can handle. We do have wait lists, yes. We, unfortunately, you know, we give priority to those juniors who can take advantage of the program for two years. Like I said, a lot of our programs are two years. But we do, welding's one, we have a waiting list in a lot, Health Sciences is a big one, Auto Tech. We're happy about the numbers for next year, we're getting some numbers in right now. You know, you never want to turn a kid away that wants that opportunity, it never feels good, but we do have, you know, space and a certain, only a certain amount of slots.
So, even with the waiting list, given preference to juniors, will kids, any kid that wants to get into the program, will they eventually have a slot even though they may have to wait till their junior year? Or is it one of those where, "Sorry, we just don't have enough room at this time"?
It can be, yeah. You know, sometimes things have a way of working out where we can, and we try our best, you know, to try to, like if they're, if we need to bump it up to 16, like we will do that just to give that kid that opportunity. But not always, you know, we have a pretty rigorous application process where the counselor sits down with the kid and they basically score them on their interests and whether they'd be a good fit for the program. And, you know, those with the higher scores from their counselors and their teachers are typically the ones who get in first and then we kind of go down the list. But yeah, I wish we had room for all of them, but.
Thank you for all you do.
Yes, thank you. More questions? All right, thank you all very much for your time. I know, I know you're busy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cody.
Okay, now we're going to shift gears a little bit. Lori Ross is going to come and share with you our most recent iReady data. We have a lot to celebrate considering what our teachers and students have been battling since August by being in seat and fighting all of our COVID protocols. So, we're excited to share some good iReady data with all of you.
Well, she kind of stole my beginning because our teachers, our teachers, our staff, our principals have encountered so much this year and have faced it head-on in setting goals right from the beginning. Everyone is so happy to be in seat and we worried about that, we worried about that all summer. But they were fluid and flexible and we have made change after change so that we could stay in seat and our kids have been dynamite, our staff has been dynamite and our teachers have been just wonderful. We faced a lot this year with not being able to have our lab classrooms open, with not being able to do our in-person cadre training with our principals and our teachers and our instructional coaches. And so, all of that training that we normally would do face-to-face, hands-on, in a classroom, getting to see it, being modeled, our principals and instructional coaches and teachers have all tried to do that in the building, on-site. So, it's not optimal, it's not as much as we've normally have during the school year, but we're pretty pleased with mid-year. And I want to share some slides with you and kind of go over a little bit about where we've been with iReady and where we are this year. Jason? There we go. So, we're going to address learning. Well, I'm going to tell you a little bit about it while the slides come up. Maybe? Okay, so it's not a normal year for instruction. We have a lower percentage of our students that scored on or above grade level at the beginning of the year and we knew that that was going to be the case with missing an entire quarter and summer school instruction. And so, we want to look at two different things. When we're looking at iReady results, we're looking at typical growth, which is the average amount a student would achieve in a normal school year. And then we want to look at stretch growth and that's putting the students on proficiency path. Sometimes it's a multi-year proficiency path to get on grade level. And so, we know we are facing that. Our ultimate goal, of course, is to get all of our kids to show growth and to attain grade-level proficiency. It's an ambitious goal, but one that we are ready and have been attacking all year. So, most schools' grades, classes should expect to be about 50% median process progress at this point in the year. All 11 of our elementary buildings have exceeded the iReady typical progress at mid-year. Reading, 70% to 90% have exceeded typical progress. Math, 66% to 73% have exceeded typical growth at this point in time. I'm just not going to worry about the slideshow.
Hey, Lori.
Yes, sir.
Could I just interject, just for everyone, make sure we're on the same page, are iReady is the tool, the mechanism for our reading and math, but we're addressing reading and the assessment or mechanism to assess reading growth? So, I just thought I'd clarify there with the reading aspect.
Correct, thank you. Thank you. What we're really excited about is that between 15% and 19% of our K-5 students at all 11 of our buildings have already achieved their stretch goals. So, where they came in, they've already made more than a year's progress in the first half of the school year. And so, that is a tribute to our teachers in the area of reading. And then math results show that between 6% and 13% of our K-5 students have already made more than a year's worth of growth. So, reading celebrations. Hey, Jason? I'm just going to say, turn it off if you want. Okay. There we go. Reading celebrations. So, we kind of wanted to take a look at where were we at midpoint last year when we took the iReady in January? Morale Heights has already exceeded the 1920 mid-year reading data, increasing 7% to 49% on or above grade level in reading at this point in time. So, compared to 1920 and despite the loss of a quarter's worth of instruction and not having summer school, they've already exceeded where they were a year ago. South School has exceeded where they were a year ago, an increase of 43.4% on or above grade level. Lawson and Thorpe Gordon were within 1% of their 2019 mid-year assessment results. Bel Air, East, Pioneer Trail, Callaway and North are all within 3% to 4% of mid-year 1920. So, since the beginning of this year in iReady, our goal is to decrease the number of kids that are two or more grade levels below. Our goal is to always be decreasing that percentage. And so, since the beginning of the year, we've seen an 8% to 18% decrease in students scoring below two or more grade levels. And I've got that breakdown at the end of our presentation. Okay, so, some celebrations at or above grade level at mid-year 2021 in January. At kindergarten, greater than 70% mastery at or above grade level. Callaway, Cedar Hill, North, South, Thorpe, Gordon and Bel Air, with Callaway leading at kindergarten with 88.89% of their students on or above grade level already. First grade, Cedar Hill, West, Morale Heights and Lawson, all of those were above 36% at mid-year, with Cedar Hill leading at 47.8%. Second grade, West, Callaway, Cedar Hill, Lawson, Morale Heights, Bel Air, greater than 42% on or above grade level, with West at 52.38%. Third grade, Bel Air, Lawson, North, Cedar Hill, East, Pioneer Trail, South, Thorpe, Gordon and West, greater than 50% of their students on or above grade level K-5, I'm sorry, third grade, with Bel Air at 70.49%. Fourth grade, Lawson, Morale Heights, North, Pioneer Trail, Bel Air and Callaway, greater than 46%, with Pioneer and Lawson both at 56.34. And then fifth grade, Bel Air, Lawson, North and Pioneer, greater than 45% on or above grade level, with North leading at 61.5%. Ladies and gentlemen, that is no small feat with that much instruction being missed last of the fourth quarter of 2019 and '20. And you have to consider too, with regression that we normally see just with summer slide. So, we've got a lot to be proud of. In math, we've got some key areas that we know we have to address. It is not as high as reading. We have a lot of very foundational building block skills that were missed that fourth quarter of instruction when we went into closure last year. We have built all of those objectives and standards into our curriculum this year so that teachers can be teaching those building blocks in addition to their grade level standards, but we know that we have a ways to go. We had a lower percentage scoring at grade level in math compared to 1920, but some celebrations. Morale Heights saw a 5% increase at mid-year compared to a year ago in 1920. East School maintained their mid-year results from 19, or 2019, sorry, despite starting the year lower. So, they've made huge gains. North, South, Gordon and West are now within 1% to 5% of their mid-year results from a year ago. And so, we know we've got work to do. we know we've got work to do. We're going to keep working, keep plugging along, but I'd like to share with you some success stories in math. Kindergarten, Bel Air, Callaway, Cedar Hill, East, Morale Heights, North, Pioneer Trail, South and West, all of them, 50% or higher, with Morale Heights and Cedar Hill, 64.5%. First grade, Cedar Hill, Lawson and Pioneer Trail, all greater than 35% on grade, on or above grade level, with 50% at Cedar Hill. Second, Lawson, Morale Heights and West, greater than 33%, with Lawson leading at 38. Third grade, Lawson and North, greater than 40%, North is leading at 44% at grade level or above. Fourth grade, Pioneer Trail, North and Lawson, greater than 37%, with the highest being Lawson at 45. And then lastly, North, Pioneer Trail and Lawson, greater than 33%, with North leading at 54%. So we have a wide range of math achievement that we still have to address. And so we'll talk about that in just a second. We've got a plan. So our goal, as I shared with you earlier, is to decrease the amount of students that are two or more grade levels behind. And ultimately, we want to get them closer and closer to grade level proficiency. So if you, you can take a look there and I can provide you with this. But for reading and math, you can see the decrease in the red. We call it red. We've got a triangle. Red is on top, two or more grade levels below where they need to be. And we have decreased them at every one of our 11 buildings, both in reading and in math. So what's our goal? Second semester focus at elementary. All of the administrators are having data chats with their classroom teachers. They're taking a look at reading and math achievement in their individual classrooms. Principals will be doing frequent math observations in the classrooms and providing teacher support through feedback. And every one of them has that goal of, of working on feedback to their teachers so that they can address what needs to be addressed so that we can see some math achievement happening throughout this next semester. And then the principals have been asked to create a second semester math action plan. Some bullet points. What are they committed to? And they come up with their own bullet plans for whatever they determine at their building with their teachers. What are we going to do so that we can raise student achievement? And then if they have to revise their school improvement plans a bit, second semester, they are allowed to do so. It's what they need. Teachers are a big part of this. They have been all year doing a great job. They're going to be analyzing student data. They're looking at overall placement of their students, but they're also looking at individual student placement. They're setting goals for themselves. Instructional plans are being made as a team. And then they're conducting those data chats. If you are, if you know about research with our learning, we know that when students are setting their own goals and they are attached to their learning, they're more invested in it. And monitor, when we monitor that, our student learning will continue to rise. And then students working along with their teachers. We have broken it down into domains. And so our schools know what domains within math and, and reading that our students are strong at and which ones need personal focus. Our students will be setting goals with their teachers. And then the goal is to, the students are looking at those frequently throughout the year, throughout this next semester. Because if you set a goal and you never look at it again until the end of the year, it's not going to serve you well. And with the teachers' help, students are taking ownership. And then all of us, and that's why we're here tonight, is to celebrate our student performance and progress toward our goals. Our staff has worked so hard between plexiglass, between masks, with trying to do small groups with not as many students in those small groups that we usually are able to serve. But they're working out the plans and they're working together to make instructional decisions. So we have to celebrate our staff and our principals' hard work in addressing that and being the instructional leaders. And then really engaging with the data throughout the rest of this semester so that we can have more success in reading, but increased success with our math achievement. Thank you, Jason, for fixing whatever was going on. Any questions?
I have a question. So Lori, you mentioned the kids that are two or more grade levels at this time. How many kids do we have?
Right. I didn't bring that breakdown. Yeah, I can, I can share that with you, though. I didn't bring that breakdown in this report.
And the principals are seeing tons and tons of success. What do you attribute this success to so that we can limit that?
Well, we've had really great training the past few years just with literacy. And we've started the three-year math plan two years ago. And so we've got some great strategies that are already in place. And so our teachers are able to put those in place and talk more about them and look at the data. They're doing data teaming. Data teaming is the number one thing. They don't know where the kids are and, and they're looking at data, whether formatively or summatively, it won't do much good if you're putting things in place that really don't address student needs. In reading, I think all, all in all, classroom structures and procedures are so in place this year. And all of our principals and teachers would can, will attribute that to being a huge part of focused learning. You know, the time is, time is there. We have structures in place, small groups in place, crossover. We're having to be very focused in what we're doing and with our time. And so to serve everyone, we're going to, we maximize the time that we're spending with the kids.
I think, you know, we just recently had a work group for the board and we discussed some of our goals and things. And we talked about J.C. Reeves and the focus of J.C. Reeves. And we kind of discussed, do we keep things consistent or do we try to make a change? But it sounds like the consistency of their reading focus is actually working really well.
Yes, yes. And hopefully, past COVID, next year, we can get back to some of our cadres and lab classrooms and just continue putting that into place. But they're being so creative about all the buildings, between videos, sharing out, just having talks with one another because you're not visiting other people's classrooms. You know, it's just they're having to collaborate more within their own building and, and looking at their own data and deciding what we're going to do. So that's been huge. Thank you. Thank you.
And we do have two schools as part of our calendar discussion that'll speak to some of the things that Lori's talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shelby, and thank you, Lori.
Okay, next we have our CFO, COO update from Jason Hoffman.
Good evening. When we had our virtual board meeting a couple weeks ago, one of the things we did was we passed a parameters resolution to issue our certificates of participation, our debt for our athletic project. And so normally, when we've done general obligation bonds, we have sold the bonds the day of the board meeting and then brought final pricing. And due to some, some complications that came up, we weren't able to do that. And that's why we had to do the parameters resolution. And so we didn't actually sell the bonds until last week. And we met all the parameters that were within the resolution. And so just what you have before you is a summary of, of the sale. It went, it went very well. We sold $21 million worth of certificates of participation. We actually had orders of $57,200,000. And so basically how it works when we go to sale, we have a phone call with Stiefel and, and their team. And they say, here's, here's what we're seeing. We've, we've had a number of people reach out and we, we have a lot of demand. And are you good with the pricing that we, and so we go to market with, here's, here's where we want to sell the bonds. And so then we get this demand. And so because the demand was so good, we were able to reduce the rate. So if we say, so like the 4122, the top one, when we went to market, we said we would sell it at 37 basis points. Well, we had so much demand that we would then go back to, we had too much demand for that. So we'd say, well, if we lower it to 30, are you still interested? If we lower it to 28, are you still interested? And so we lower it until enough people fall out of that. And so because of that demand, you can see each of the, each of the offerings, we got a lower rate than what we actually went to market at. So it was an excellent, excellent day. The second bullet there shows a number of the, the financial institutions that purchased our bonds. I was excited that Central Bank was interested. And I think they bought the first four series of our bonds. And one of the benefits of, of using Stiefel is they're a very large corporation and they have a, a good financial backing. And if we had, I don't know exactly where they had to fill in, but they had to actually buy a little bit of the bonds because there wasn't some interest in some areas. And so they're able to do that. And then they just push that out to their investors. So just wanted to give you an update that, that we met all the parameters and we've gone to market and everything, everything went well. Have anything for me?
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Lori, can I go back and ask Shelby one question? Does that, can we go, can I back up or can, should I just email her? Okay. Shelby, I just had a question and I turned my mic on, so maybe you can hear me a little bit better. But in your report, you were showing that we had 128 new enrollments. Do you, do we know where those enrollments are coming from? It was a, I think it was in Dawn's part. I'll email you about it. I got you.
Okay. We'll move on to old business. Second read of the 2021-2022 school calendar. Dr. Scarborough and Mr. Hoffman, you're up.
Those of you that are presenting, if you want to come on up. Yeah. You failed the last time.
We are excited to bring lots of people together tonight as we want to profess that we are stronger together. When we talk about the calendar, as we mentioned the last time when we presented this option to you, is research identifies that teacher effectiveness is the single most important factor to influence student success. And so we are committed to supporting continuous improvement in our schools through developing our staff. And so we have to do our part to make sure that we remove barriers, that we are providing structure, and we're also providing support to help our staff, which in turn supports our students. So when we are talking about professional learning, what is it? And why do, why do we need to add this extra time? And so when we listen to our staff, because it was very important for us to know what do our staff need? And through a variety of measures, which we'll talk about that also, is there were four key things that kept coming up over and over. And the first part was ownership. Buildings say over again and teachers say, please let us do our jobs. Please let us do what we need to do to support the students in our building. And then give us time to collaborate so we can talk about what our needs are, what, what resources do we need, how can we best support our students? And then looking at frequency. For example, a couple weeks ago, we had an early out that was scheduled. We had to release school early because of the weather. So all of the activities and events that were supposed to take place that day for staff development didn't get to take place. So then we have to fast forward to the next month and we have an early out, but they already had other activities. So something has to be not taken care of that could have been taken care of if we had that time. So frequent and ongoing. We all know that when you do a repetitive pattern of behavior, you're automatically going to get better at something, just like practice. And then a focus. What is our focus? And as you all remember, when we worked with Kevin Daniel, we decided we need to have that North Star, as Dr. Lethnica mentioned, that we're working towards. And so we have to have that commitment to best practices. And what best practices? We have to be able to research and know and practice and continually look at how it's best serving our students. So for tonight, we're going to do a couple of things. Ryan Burns is going to speak about some communications throughout this process. Brenda Hatfield is going to talk about survey. And then we're excited to have a highlight for different schools that talk about how they utilize time and how we can best support student learning.
Great point. So if you.
Hello, everyone. Yes, my name is Ryan Burns. I'm the Director of Communications.
Correct. But would you make sure Shelby of each person that comes up to introduce in their role in the district? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Ryan Burns. Thank you. And that's all. No. I did want to just briefly talk to you all about communications and the information that we have shared about the 21-22 calendar. So we sent information to families and staff in January immediately following the first read at the board meeting, the, actually the next day. That goes to over 9,000 recipients for families in the district, in addition to our 1,000-plus staff members. So each time we send a message, including the snow day messages that go out at 5:30 in the morning that I pray have correct information in them, 10,000 people get them. And just to, to kind of give you a snapshot, when that information was shared in January, I received less than five direct email responses from families and staff members. We also sent the FAQ document a couple of weeks ago this month in February, again, out to 10,000-plus people with the answers to some of those most commonly asked questions that we were hearing. I received less than five direct email responses from families on that. So to put that in reference for you, a frame of reference in some of the other more popular or less popular topics that we've had in the past few years, as an example, when I would send out information on when we were looking at changing the start times, I would at times get anywhere from 50 to 80 to 100 responses from parents. I spend all evening, all weekend answering questions, trying to make sure I share that information with the right people at district leadership positions and school buildings. And similarly, this summer, when we were sending out information about COVID-19, the reentry plan, it would not be uncommon for me to hear from anywhere from 30 to 50 to 70 family members responding to those very somewhat controversial topics. So I just wanted to give you a, a frame of reference for that information and let you know that at the district level, that was how many direct responses we received when information was shared about the calendar from families.
Ryan, of those five that you were referencing, or the less than five, were those five in favor or not in favor?
They were not in favor. The common theme was parents with concerns of after-school care and how it would be covered.
And I appreciate the, you know, in reference in the numbers, but in all fairness, when we were talking about start times and things, we vetted those for months and months. And so I don't think we're comparing apples to apples on that one. But thank you.
Hello, friends. I had sent out, we created a survey in conjunction with the principals.
Brenda.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Would you introduce yourself and your role in the district?
Brenda Hatfield, Director of Quality Improvement and for fun, Director of Daycare on the side. We'll talk about that later.
Thank you, Brenda.
So we did a, we created a survey that the principals sent out to each of their buildings. They were in control of it. I simply gathered the information. We all had access to it at the same time. I think you've seen this, but I'm going to, I'm going to repeat it for you. It was a very short survey. It was, what's your role in the district? It was, are you in favor, not in favor? And then, do you have any comments for us? That was where, that's where we landed. So three very simple questions. 53% of total staff filled it out, but I need you to remember that total staff is custodians, food service, pairs, all of those people. If you only looked at certified staff, which is all of our teachers plus people like behavior interventionists, counselors, those sorts of positions, it's actually a 76% response rate. And so I feel pretty confident in those numbers. I feel confident in 53, but the problem is I don't feel confident that I've heard from a lot of custodians and food service. But since it doesn't impact them, that's my suspicion as to why they didn't respond. If you look at the entire staff, the 53% that responded, we had 69.4% favorable. If you look at the 76% that are certified staff, so of all the certified staff, 76% of them filled it out, that number is 67.4% favorable. So just to give you a sense of what those are.
And Brenda?
Uh huh.
Could I interject? Clarification that 76% of the certified in the 18 buildings.
Oh, yeah.
So for example, sir, we didn't fill it out. I mean, it was just in the 18 schools.
So these were surveys generated by the principals. So they went to the staff directly. It did not go to people like Shelby and Larry, me. It doesn't go to Dix Road, which would be the instructional coaches, technology staff, board office. It didn't, it didn't go to those because we're not assigned to a building. It would only have gone to staff assigned to a building. Any other questions for me? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Brenda, when were the surveys sent out to the staff?
So they sent them out in January.
Before or after the board meeting? I believe it was after the board meeting.
I reported it out at the last meeting, but I'm, without looking up the exact. I, that I cannot recall. I apologize. I would have to look it up and see.
Thank you.
And then each principal sent it out. So even with that, exactly when? January.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, click. Sorry. Oh, I forgot to do some Larry's stuff. See? Shelby's getting mad at me. Larry, we also did some research. Larry did some research for us on different schools. And then I'll advance what you tell me to.
Yeah. We just wanted to see, to try to get a comparison. So as a median.
So, as a median school comparable, we can, you know, say that Russellville and Southern Boone, for example, may, but as we look at just schools across the state, with us being the median at our enrollment and then taking the, the next 10 school districts larger than us and the 10 schools smaller than us, where do we land? And so, of those 20, 11 of those did some sort of weekly early out or late start and nine did not. So, we're not saying it's unanimous that they all do, but just trying to get a comparison, relatively speaking, something we looked at.
Larry, do any of those schools do a four-day or you just, they just do an early or a late start?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. There are more districts each year as a traditional, or as a general rule, they are smaller districts. I am not aware of any school on that list that is doing a four-day week.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we just had some other notable districts that are. And so, I think it's, you could say, well, I know eight districts that are not. Yeah, they're out there. So, I think as a general rule, about half the schools do and about half the schools do not. So, we're not trying to imply that they all do and that's why we should. Just, those are just some others that are doing the weekly out or late starts.
So, for tonight, one of the things that we felt was very important is explain our why. And there's four questions that we hope to answer that you can confidently know that we have done our research on answering these questions. But what is our purpose in doing this? What do we hope we achieve by doing this? What are some strategies to help us become better? And you'll hear about some successes and some strategies that schools are using. And then the metrics that we use now and we will continue to use to assess, to assess our improvement efforts. So, our purpose is twofold. We have to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our students. And students come to school every day with a wide variety of needs and abilities, strengths, growth opportunities. And we have to make sure that we're meeting their needs to meet them where they're at and move them forward. It's a huge challenge and therefore, we have to make sure we develop our staff so that they're able to identify the needs of students, put systems and supports in place to help them improve. And the only way that we are able to do that is through collaboration. So, we all wrap our arms around students to make sure we give them what they need to be successful. And we need to be innovative. We have to think outside of the box. We may have to do things a little bit differently sometimes to meet the needs of our staff and students. And then at the end of the day, we have to base decisions on data. It's really easy to get emotionally attached and tied to things, but when we use data to drive decisions, as you're going to hear from schools today, you'll see that the big impact that it actually has. So, question two is what do we hope to achieve? At the end of the day, we have to increase our student achievement, period. Everything we do is aligned and we take that responsibility very seriously. But our students and staff deserve the very best that we have to give them. And like I mentioned before, we have to remove barriers. And if time has been a barrier, which our staff has said repeatedly over and over again, while it might not be ideal, it's a starting point to help provide that extra time and support that our staff needs. And then current strategies and successes. So, while we have four student, or schools, I'm sorry, East, Morale Heights, Jefferson City High School and Thomas Jefferson that are represented tonight, we do have a wide variety of staffs. If you want to raise your hand if you're here tonight, representing quite a few of our buildings. So, we appreciate them being here tonight. So, when the schools come up, they're going to obviously introduce themselves, tell you what the teacher, what they do, and then how this, this extra time would impact them. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those as well. So, East Elementary.
Dr. Day, does East Elementary have a cheer or a chant for the, are they the Eagles? Is that, are they the Eagles? It's the East Eagles?
Our big thing at East School is we always say, East School, and the kids always reply back, we rule. So, we use that a whole lot.
There we go. Sounds good. Thank you.
And of course, I'm Ryan Day. I'm the proud principal of East School and I'm proud and honored to be here tonight to ask, to bring some teachers to share with you some of the great things that are happening at East School. We have definitely found that our teams that work together, really plan, really collaborate, really talk about how they're, how, what they're doing is working and what is not. Those are the ones that really show successes and we've seen some great successes. I have some wonderful ladies here today. I have two third-grade teachers. I have Emma Weston and Ashley Crisp along with my incredible instructional coach, Melissa Vernon, are going to be here and they're going to share some things with you, things that were, have been going really well. And as I hear a lot at school and very often at home, when you have a lot of women in the room, they're a lot smarter than you, you be quiet and let them talk. So, I'm going to let them share.
Good plan.
Very smart.
I am Ashley Crisp and I teach third grade at East. You'll notice up on the slides, we try to work really hard to plan collaboratively during our planned times during the week when we're not in our meetings. And these are a few of the things that we try to accomplish as much as we possibly can in our time. Sequencing lessons. We work every week to make sure we're pacing out our lessons, working off of the pacing guides from the district as well as building in some time to discuss student understanding, to see if we need to take some time to reteach that, which moves to the next bullet as well, discussing how students are progressing. Sometimes we know we need to take an extra step, an extra day and reteach a lesson. And we take some time during our planned times to discuss that briefly. We also work to intentionally plan high-level questioning and common formative assessments so that we can be consistent among our grade. Discussing instructional strategies. We know that we try to plan things together and work the same across our classrooms, but we also know that we teach to our strengths as well. So, sometimes taking time to reflect on those and things that worked well for her, maybe didn't work so well for me and we can try things, bouncing ideas off of each other. We also use this time to develop common rubrics, to have consistent assessments based on our standards and work on data teams, which has been discussed a couple of times already tonight, specifically focusing on priority standards. And we are able to get some of this done during our planning times, sometimes though we can only scratch the surface because of time constraints. So, with more time, we would be able to dig deeper into all of these things. That next bullet there, vertically teaming, we think that it would be very helpful to have time every week or during these extra planning periods to work with other grade levels as well. During our planned times, we are with our, just our grade level. So, we don't get the time to talk with the teachers with the grade below and above us. So, for third grade, it would be nice to be able to sit down with the second-grade teachers and see what skills they should be coming to our grade with, knowing what those prerequisites are, what gaps we, excuse me, we need to fill, as well as meeting with the fourth-grade teachers and seeing where the standards go from our grade level, how they progress among the grades, and seeing what skills we need to better prepare them with for the next year.
I'm Emma Weston. I teach third grade at East as well. I will address the last two bullets on the slide. The first is with extra time, we would be able to better assess our student data and specifically, and target interventions for students who need them. And we all, of course, do differentiated learning already, but having that extra time to look at our data more closely and plan collaboratively different strategies to put in place to fill some of those gaps in understanding and especially for those foundational skills. And that works for enrichment as well, our students who are already performing at grade level. How can we move them ahead? And that's something that gets left behind sometimes just because we focus more on our students who need gaps filled. Our last bullet is extra time to implement new learning from professional development. We get a lot of really great professional development and then it's like, okay, go try it, without any time to put a plan into place or talk with our team members to implement those with the best fidelity possible. And then also extra time to create our weekly guided reading plans, which is kind of like just our bread and butter of literacy instruction and create materials with our instructional coaches' support would be very helpful. She's very, very busy and so she can't always make it to all of our daily planning periods. So, just having that extra time where she would be free to assess us or assist us if we needed support with those things as well would be very helpful.
Hi. My name is Melissa Vernon. I have been in education for 21 years. I've been an instructional coach at East for four. And I have two children right now in the elementary buildings here in Jeff City. And I too was a J-bird. So, I go JC. So, you know, when we started talking about this time, three really important things came up for me as an instructional coach. The first thing is vertical teaming. So, I meet with grade-level teams all the time, twice a week during their planned times. But we never get to really sit down and say, this is where second grade is, this is where third grade is, this is where fourth grade is, where are our holes? How, how are we going to fix this? How do we make sure it's seamless? This time would be so perfect for that vertical teaming. You know, when you look at a standard, it changes in its complexity from first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. And what third grade is doing on one standard, they might need to bump it up a little bit so that those children are prepared for fourth grade. Also, it would be really great for math prep and test prep because sometimes some things are taught at different times of the year, at different grade levels. And to be able to sit down and actually have those conversations would be really powerful as teachers and educators. I also think that implementing those plans around specific PD during the teacher meetings is, is really great. You know, we ask our teachers to meet twice a week with us during their personal planned time. Their planned time is 40 minutes this year. And by the time they get kids situated and they use the restroom and we all get set down, that leaves us about 30 minutes. So, my job is to make sure that they get PD, professional development, and we do a really good job of getting that to them. But then they have to pack up and head back to class. With this extra time, we could sit down and say, okay, let's get out our plans. Let's really implement this. Let's implement it in reading, in math, in science. I could be there and I could totally help coach them. They could practice what they're going to say, the questions they're going to ask. I just, I can really see the benefit from that extra intentional planning. I also think, you know, and they talked about it a little bit, working with other grade levels to make those seamless transitions would be very, very helpful and really good communication between all the teachers. And then the last piece is just working as a team to support all of those struggling students. You know, at our school, we do have quite a few struggling students and we really try to create a team around those kids and a plan for them to be successful. And the third-grade team has shown remarkable growth in their I-ready scores. And they work all of their planned times together. They work after-school together. They meet as teams with the behavior person, with myself, with the reading teachers. And this time would be really great to be able to pull all those people together and really make solid plans for these kids that are really struggling. I, I think that getting all those people involved and hearing all of, all of our ideas can only help really strengthen those kids' academic, you know, achievement. So, you know, in, in closing, I just think that, that this time would strengthen professional development. It would strengthen staff relationships. It would strengthen teacher efficacy. And all of that would help with student achievement. Thanks.
Thank you, folks from East.
Thank you.
All of you.
Sue Haugen, Principal at Morale Heights. It was important for my assistant principal, Dawn, Dawn Day, and myself to be here. Our instructional coach had also planned to be here this evening to, to join us for this time with you. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunate, I don't know, her, she's doing parental duties and is enjoying the night at gymnastics. So, first night of gymnastics. Mom can't miss that. So, I thought it was important to share with you some of the things that we've seen at Morale Heights recently, just with the work that we've done. Each year, we look at our school and student data to set goals for the upcoming year. Three years ago, our behavior data was among the highest and our student academic data was among the lowest. We have worked purposefully to turn that around for our students and for our staff because they deserve it. We created professional development in small segments during teacher planning times, much as you heard, much like what you heard from East, to target behavioral and social emotional needs as well as instructional practices. Three years later, we are turning our ship. We are proud of our progress. We've reduced office referrals by 90%. I'll state that again just because I think it's pretty incredible. We've reduced office referrals by 90%. And that is through commitment of work done by our teachers and growth by our teachers to make a difference every day. We began this school year with 24% of our students reading on level and we've doubled that. This is higher, as Lori at Ross already said, higher than last year, even with making up for three months of missed instruction. In math, we've already tripled the number of students on level since the start of the school year. And we've reduced the number of students who are far below, which would be that two or more grade levels below. What we, what can we do for student learning with meaningful time each week to support teacher practices? We feel we can make significant gains with frequent, ongoing time to collaborate, plan, and develop our staff.
Hi, I'm Dawn Day. So, each year, what we do whenever we're thinking about professional development is we sit down and we create a plan and we look at what opportunities we feel like our teachers need in order to improve their instruction and for students to grow. Once we have kind of an idea of what we'd like to do, then we look at the calendar to kind of determine what things will be, early release professional development, what things will we do during the day, after-school, those types of things. As you can imagine, I used stated the amount of time that, you know, we have during planned times. We really have to tremendously cut that down. A lot of times, our list is very long on the things that we'd like to work on and we have to kind of look at our priorities and narrow that down because we just can't fit it all in. So, we look at what's going to be the best opportunities for our teachers to move them forward in order to help our students be successful. So, just as an example, this year, math workshop was going to be one of the things we really focused on. But then with our time being cut down, COVID precautions, planned times are shorter. We knew we just weren't going to be able to give it the justice it deserved. So, that's one of the things we had to put off until next year. Having an early release is going to get us more frequent professional development opportunities. Sometimes we go a month before we come back around to what we were working on at our last meeting. So, East talked a lot about what they do during those planning sessions and we do the same kinds of things. We have professional development. Then we spend a week talking about data. We spend a week doing literacy teams, which is where we look specifically at reading and are our students growing or not and how can we assist them? So, sometimes we have just 30 to 40 minutes and it's a whole month before we can come back to that. So, it takes a lot out of the impact of what are we doing? How are we going to help that move our students forward in the classroom? So, we believe having these early releases would not only give us more time, but would give teachers time to think about, this is what we just learned. What does that look like in our classroom? Let's do some planning with that. How are we going to help our students? Maybe even creating some of those things out and going through it with some vertical teaming would be helpful. We're already seeing a tremendous amount of growth, as Sue shared. But just think about the impact we could be making if we had more time. We've doubled our amount of kids that are reading on level, but it's still not nearly as high as what we want it to be. Our expectations are much higher than what it is right now. So, thinking about creating that time for teachers and time for them to really dig into that, we feel is, would help our students grow. We also want to make sure that we are addressing all needs of all of our learners. So, we really take a professional learning community approach. So, we look at our students and we diagnose their, or analyze their data. And we think about, what do we want our students to learn? How are we going to know if they've learned that? And then what do we do if they don't? All of that conversation has to happen during one planned time because if we wait until the next month, then we're already on a different standard and we're not talking about that anymore. So, it's really, really hard for us to fit all of that in and it almost ends up being like, one teacher gets to kind of share what one kid is doing. We can focus on that one kid, but then we need to move on. So, we're just not able to really dig deep to what our students need in order to help them improve. So, using that to do some intentional planning to increase. So using that to do some intentional planning to increase our engagement and our rigor in our classroom and really analyze that data, we feel would be helpful.
An additional element with being able to put in consistently a PLC model with the professional learning communities is a culture of collaboration. Our teachers would have additional time to work in teams, engaging in that ongoing cycle of analysis that promotes deep team learning. This process in turn leads to higher levels of student achievement, promoting working in vertical teams, as East already identified, and avoiding that work in isolation. The reality is, if there's something great going on in my colleague's classroom, doesn't every child at that grade level, shouldn't they have access to that same type of learning? And that happens through that collaboration. But the collaboration takes time. In addition, a focus on results. So as a PLC, student data is the judge of our teacher effectiveness. Every teacher team will have additional time to identify the current level of student achievement, establish a goal to improve learning, work together to achieve that goal, and provide periodic evidence of progress. Working as a PLC allows us to determine teacher needs for professional development as well so that what we're providing our teachers isn't based on what admin believes would be important, but in addition, what does the student data tell us our teachers are needing? We feel strongly that having that frequent, ongoing time to collaborate and plan and develop our staff is what we need in order to take Jeff City School to be that premier district.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Dawn.
I am the English Department Lead Teacher at JCHS. I'm so fortunate to work with an incredible group of English teachers. And if you're looking at my slide, I'm going to start actually on the second bullet point. Our most successful teachers and most successful teams have really taken to heart the direction that our building leadership has given us and that our instructional coaches have also provided to us. To give you kind of an idea of what the English department looks like, in the current schedule, junior and senior English teachers do not have protected team time. The schedule just doesn't allow for it. And as you can imagine, juniors are getting ready to take the ACT and seniors are trying to graduate. So those are important grade levels. As a result of all of this, team meetings happening in the precious minutes before or after school. As a result, those teams have less time for data analysis, designing and refining instructional experiences, and collaborating effectively. However, we're really fortunate that our freshmen and sophomore English teachers do have protected team time for collaboration. They can do instructional coaching cycles, data analysis, and professional development, which all translates to student growth and success. With students showing up to 10% growth per unit, this is growth that's happening in a pandemic. It's not happening in an ideal circumstance. So if that's possible now, I can only imagine what would be possible with additional time. I'll echo what other people have said about the importance of vertical teaming and also being able to team across buildings. We would love to be able to engage with our middle school partners and with Cap City across town because we know that more professional development will only grow better teachers. In other words, when you're investing in your teachers, you're going to invest in your students.
Thank you, Krista.
My name is Sean Kelch. I'm the principal at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. Almost dropped my presentation there. Our data at TJMS is getting awesome. It's improving by leaps and bounds. We can use this additional time, if we get it approved, to be proactive, to be proactive with our social emotional learning, to be proactive with our culture and community, to be proactive with our instructional improvement, to increase our intentional planning, and to collaborate with our literacy people. Speaking of literacy, I would like to introduce Ms. McCutcheon. She is our department chair for reading.
Thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes to express my support for the early release time that could be potentially added to our school calendar. My name is Amanda McCutcheon, and I teach sixth grade reading at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. An extra 70 minutes of professional development each week would be greatly beneficial for my students and myself as a reading teacher. Kate Leary, our instructional coach, and Jessica Smith, the district literacy trainer, have been a tremendous asset to the success of my reading team. But this comes with added time commitments for teachers like me. At our biweekly meetings, Jessica tailors professional development to our needs. Their ideas and advice have helped me move my students in the right direction. This year, the median percent progress towards typical growth is 174% for my sixth graders. They were so excited when they had surpassed the typical growth. Many students moved past their stretch growth goal. This is in a year with a pandemic and students who missed the end of their fifth grade school year. This growth would not have happened without the professional development our team has received. With the added 70 minutes, all subjects could benefit in this way. We could also use this time to share our I-ready reading data and strategies with the rest of the school. This would enable all teachers to be able to incorporate reading lessons into their content classes. With the extra time to collaborate, it would give all teachers the essential time required to intentionally plan reading into their lessons to ensure student reading growth. Teachers would love to have their work completed at school and know that there isn't a load to take home each night or weekend. Please consider adding Monday early releases to our school calendar. This time for professional development, collaboration, and intentional planning is crucial in moving our district to excellence. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So I've talked, I talked, mentioned last January, our last meeting, about our data improving. I just recently mentioned our TJ data improving. I want to give you a couple of examples. Our community or our culture and climate is growing because of our work in the social emotional learning. This is data based off of our staff survey, so this is not data that I made up, but our student respect overall in our building went up 30 points to a total of 71%. And that's in a building that has 1,200 students. I mean, we, I think, are the fifth largest middle school in the state. Our reading growth is due in part by the time that we steal for data analysis and extra PD, whether it's from their regular planned time or whether it's before or after school. And this growth is shown in our latest I-ready data. And yes, that's not a typo. I want to make sure to point this out. The typical growth for our entire building was at 144%. Now, if you remember from the elementary presentation, they said our typical growth should be about 50% or better when we are halfway through the year. So for TJ, we're at 144%. By the way, I also have to point out that that's the only school in the district that's over 100%. Some things that I attribute this is because our amazing improvement is because of our proactive approach. We've been striving since I've been there to become more proactive than reactive. In my opinion, this choice for you guys is the choice of proactive as a district or reactive. It's being proactive with approving this or reactive with turning down the change. If you look back at the data, 69% or two, more than two-thirds of our staff, they want to be proactive. They want this change. The 31%, they're in the camp of rather staying reactive. Unfortunately, I will have to mention this too. I was a little bit disappointed when I was reading the Sunday paper yesterday and I read the article about this very vote. I was disappointed in the fact that we were publicizing letters to you guys that are in the minority, in my opinion, in the minority of negative against this. People had a chance for their say, 31% of them were in the minority, and yet they're trying to be the loudest voice. So my charge to you is, if you want to get better, if you want to chase the proactive approach, approve this calendar. If you want to stay reactive, stick with the status quo.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mandy.
So the final question is about metrics. What are we going to do? And right now, we are looking at these metrics all the time. And when you hear the different buildings talk about the data teaming, they're looking at individual student data. When we look at things at a high level, we have to be able to diagnose at the very foundation of why do our students struggle? What do our students need? So looking at graduation rates, student attendance, behavior, I-readies, student grades, staff data, parent survey data, all of those things are metrics that we take into consideration that we monitor progress. And as they mentioned, when we see that we have a need or we have a systemic problem, that's when we look at our resources and our supports and our professional development to support our staff. So one of the pieces Brenda Hatfield is going to speak to also is I know after our last meeting is talking about after-school care, what that might look like. So she's going to share some updates on that.
So our friends from both Y Care and Boys and Girls Club are happy to help us. Both had some concerns about how they would staff it. Both have given me numbers of what they need and we have significantly more capacity as far as our paras than what they need from us, even based on non-COVID numbers. Our only challenges there are that we will have to get, and Bridgette has got a plan for this, we will have to get some of our paras certified. Boys and Girls Club will require some specific certifications from the state of Missouri. We'll have to make that happen. But other than that, they have both been very helpful and very much committed to our families and to our students, so we are very pleased. Questions for me on my discussions with them?
I have one, if we have the opportunity. Have we surveyed our paras or talked to our teams of paras to see how they feel about this new?
So the, so the survey was just the one survey?
Okay.
And did they make comments? Yes. Or, I mean, yes, not all paras made comments, so I got to be careful about that and not all of them filled out the survey. There are some who have concerns.
Sure.
I think they are less concerned, when we talked with them, because I've talked to some, I know Bridgette's talked to some, they're less concerned about being with a Y Care staff member who's trained, that they're following Y Care procedures than us sticking them in a gym with 100 kids. I think that was terrifying. And quite frankly, sticking me in a gym with 10 kids is terrifying. So I totally understand that. I think it was the, are you guys just going to make us figure this out or is there a structure? And for the Boys and Girls Club, we would actually be sending staff to them and again, they would be supervised during that period of time by a Boys and Girls Club staff member and they would be following all of their procedures. I think that makes it, it appears that that makes it more palatable. Still, nobody wants change, but it is slightly more palatable.
So did I hear correctly that we might have to use subs for this?
Not for, not for Y Care or Boys and Girls Club, other than we would have a group of paras, let's say I pick school A, and all of their paras would go to the Knowles to deal with Boys and Girls Club. We would have sub paras because we know that if I sent this three of you and Ken happens to be sick today, I'm going to have to send Stephanie. So we would have our people that would be subs for those particular spaces.
So we wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us money?
Well, we're paying the paras already, so no, it doesn't cost you additional money.
No additional money.
Not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge.
Other than, wait a minute, so for Boys and Girls Club, I am going to have to get any para that's there TB tested, and there is a fee associated with TB testing. I think it's $10, but I, to be honest with you, I don't know.
You don't know that?
I don't know the TB testing rate, no.
It's $10.
Thanks, thanks for knowing that.
And then Brenda, so if we give this time back and teachers want to utilize this to analyze IEPs and have meetings and...
That's not a me question.
Well, I just mean, I'm just saying, we're going to pull paras from their traditional role and put them in a Y Care or Boys and Girls Club role so then they're not available for the, they're not getting the professional development nor the collaboration that we're asking for, correct?
They're not typically getting that on an early out.
Oh, they're not? So what is the, what happens to a para on an early release, their release as well?
On traditional early releases right now?
Yes.
It's pretty much dependent upon the building and the students that they work with because some, some may work one-on-one with students, some may support classrooms, so it's pretty much what is happening in a building that's going to be specific to what the paras are doing.
Okay.
So I have a quick question, especially for elementary schools, a couple of things. From the time the bell rings at dismissal to the time the last child is out of the building, about how much time has lapsed? Do we know?
That's going to vary by building. Any of the building principals want to speak to that?
Eighteen minutes.
Eight to 10 minutes?
I think she said eighteen. I will tell you that on the last early release that we had at Bel Air School, dismissal began at 12:35 and I pulled out of the parking lot at 1:00, so 25 minutes, and there were still cars dismissing. So maybe 18 minutes is the average, but as a parent who picks up during early release, it's a 25 to 30-minute process. And from my understanding, are all of our buildings dismissing from the classroom? Or is that by, does that, I guess that was my, one of my big concerns was the dismissal. Knowing how long it takes to pick up my child, you know, is the 70 minutes really enough? When you factor in the dismissal times?
Right. And this year, we've had challenges because of COVID on what, you know, where they're dismissing from and keeping students, you know, separated and socially distanced. And so there are, are time factors right now because of COVID. But every building has their procedures and has, you know, things in place so they can try to dismiss as quickly as they possibly can on those days where we have more parent pickups. Those are obviously challenges that we have to, have to address, but I'm confident that, you know, teachers and staff can take two minutes and maximize two minutes in any kind of setting. So if they need to look at how we can leverage other help or what we can do to make that better, I'm confident that they can do that.
I'd like to, could I make a motion, please? Are we, are we okay, ready to do that?
Are we ready?
Is there, I mean, Shelby, do you have anything else to present?
No, I was just going to tie up that we obviously recognize that we have lots of challenges and lots of things that we need to do to improve, to help support our student learning and support our staff. And this was, you know, one opportunity for us that we felt listening to our staff we could bring forward and present it as an option.
I'd like to make a motion, and if it gets a second, I'd like to speak to the motion, please. Okay? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the calendar dates, including the first day, the last day, the weather makeup, the no school, and the distance learning days, and exclude the approval of the early releases at this time. And if that gets a second, I'd like to speak to the motion, please.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I make this motion with, I want to, I want to make sure that everyone understands from my perspective, I am absolutely not opposed to this plan of the early release. I have heard and respect, nobody respects the staff that we've heard from more than I do and I value their input. I'm concerned that if we try to move forward with it tonight, that there's so much, there are so many unknowns and there's so much uncertainty that we're going to, you know, potentially not move favorably with it or we're going to move forward with, you know, a lot of uncertainty and a lot of, a lot of unknowns. So I, I hope that what we can do, and the purpose of my motion is to allow us to act on approving the other dates on the calendar, but then to say, let's absolutely take back to the administration a, a plan to say, bring us a recommendation that we are confident has been fully vetted. And it may, in my mind, it may be more time than 70 minutes, you know, a week. What I hear from our staff is that, you know, they need more time and we, I absolutely believe that that's critical. I absolutely believe that the frequency of the professional development and the collaboration time would, would no doubt be better than a month between those times. And so I'm completely, again, in favor of the weekly. I guess, again, my question is that with us moving as quickly as we have, there are a lot of unanswered questions in our community and our constituents that is going to cause, I think, some, you know, pushback and resistance. We know that there's, again, because of the speed of the communication, there's already some misinformation out there that we have to overcome and that's going to be a detrimental impact to the success of this. I absolutely want us to do it, do it right, and do it in a way that we get, you know, the most acceptance and endorsement of it that we can on the staff and the public. It's also my understanding that we don't have to, we're not under a timeframe by policy or any regulatory thing that says we have to approve the complete calendar tonight. There's no drop-dead date that's on us and immediately before us to approve the calendar. And so that, giving... And so that, giving, you know, the fact that we have some more time to, to work on it and to look at it and to make sure we've vetted it completely, addressed as much as we can the concerns. I know that we're not gonna get a plan that's gonna be universally endorsed by everyone. We know that's not a reality, but I just would hope that we can come with a plan that would be more universally accepted and endorsed by our staff and by the community. So that's the reason for my motion.
And I would like to speak just about myself seconding the motion. I appreciate so much all of the feedback that folks have given us. I know that Ryan mentioned the less than five, but I know that countless teachers and parents have reached out to every single board member, whether it's via email or phone, and have come to us even with solutions and not just bringing problems, which is always appreciated. I want to give back time to teachers more than anybody. I think that our teachers in our district are working harder than anybody right now. My biggest concern is that I don't think that 70 minutes is enough, and so I would like, just as Ken said, for us to kind of go to the drawing board and come up with some additional solutions. I'm not opposed to talking about some really different changes, like a four-day school week. I really think that we need to figure out a way to give back some time to our teachers but so that they can really, really maximize and, you know, have time to meet with parents and make those phone calls and talk about their IEPs and build on their professional development. I just think that we got a little bit more work to do.
I would just, I would just like to add that, you know, in, in my conversations with my friends, my lifelong friends who are educators, I always hear consistently two, two things. Please protect our planning time, and we need more time to collaborate, less meetings and forced trainings, but true collaboration, where the real meat and potatoes of learning and growth happens. And so I keep hearing that. But we don't know what next school year is gonna look like. We're still in the middle of a pandemic, and if the CDC says that 75 to 80% of our society has to be vaccinated for herd immunity, are we gonna be there by August? Are we gonna be back to normal dismissal? Are we going to be able to have meetings together in rooms? Is the Plexi class gonna be gone? Are we gonna have to close our buildings here or there because of no substitutes if too many teachers are quarantining? We have no idea what next school year is gonna look like. And I want so much for this to be successful. I think it's really important that every educator in here and every educator, educator that's watching know that Shelby and Larry have gone to the mat for you in ways that I don't even think you realize, and they have been your incredible champions, and you should be very proud of how hard they fight for you. My fear is, I want to do it, and I want to do it right, because you guys deserve, after dismissal and you've got 30 or 40 minutes left and you've gotta talk about all these kids and these IEPs, you need more than that. You do, and you deserve more than that. So any conversation that we have about, let's vet it further, let's talk about it further, it's for you, it's not against you. We want to give you more than you're asking for, we just need to figure out the right way to do it. But it's really important that you guys know that these two individuals, when we're in session and closed session, they have your back more than you realize. I just wanted to say that.
If I could, piggyback onto what Stephanie said, and I agree with, with everything she did, I would encourage you a couple of things when you, when you bring a plan back to us. I don't necessarily think a vote to not proceed on something is just being reactionary. I think we're trying to protect our parents, our kids, our teachers, and everybody for the tremendous change that our district has over, has seen in the last four to five years. We've gone from five, or seven block to five block and back to seven block. We've seen start times change, we've seen a new high school open, and I think if anybody, you know, changes the constant in our district, and, and there's nothing wrong with catching a breath to make sure we do something right, because the worst step would be to do something and then have to come back and redo it again a second time. So we want to do it right the first time. I think, speaking to the, that there's probably some misinformation out there, I think that was led to the fact when we had our first presentation from the group in January, I believe it was alluded that this was teacher-driven and we were being presented what the teachers wanted, and then the next morning, my phone blew up that the teachers were saying, we've never been surveyed on any of this. This was news to us. So I think it'd be a good idea to get the teachers and the parents to have some forums where they can speak and we can all move together, together, and, you know, to Larry's adage of stronger together, that would, that would really help. My last point is, that I want to see in the presentation that you bring back to us, is I want to see a measurable result. We talk about, we're making progress, we're doing these things. When we went to the elementary starting earlier because the kids learn better at the elementary level, the high school kids learn better in the afternoon, and that was before some of our time on the board, but once we make those decisions based on academic attainment, then it seems like that, that decision or that, those parameters are never brought forth again, that, hey, because of this, we increased this. I'd like to see, tell me what we're gonna measure, and next year this time, we're gonna see an increase of, hopefully this percent according to the experts. I just don't want to do change for the sake of change, I want to do change for the sake of success.
Okay, we have a...
Could I say one other thing? Then, I also want to say that, I mean, I hope, again, that the message is clear to our staff, this is absolutely not a lack of support or not a lack of hearing you. We, again, I think if anything, we would like to see an expansion beyond what we're talking about in this plan, if at all possible, and to give us an opportunity to make sure that we have done everything we can to respond to the things that the staff has said, and to be sensitive, and, and to move in that direction that we all, all want to go.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nope.
Okay. Yep. Move on to any business? And Dr. Litzke, you will share the potential April 2022 bond issue?
So we had shared last month during my report that we would give a timeline for what the next 14 months would look like. I think Sarah McDonald referenced when she came up and spoke during open forum, of a concern of a need, and to set that up for success for potentially in the spring of '22. So I want to give an overview this evening, and we're gonna use the same type of format that we were, as a school district, successful when we proposed J plus C in the spring of '17. And so I want to give an overview to address what that looks like, and kind of each month, what will, will do that, and that will be on regular monthly intervals. When we have coffees with Larry, we'll touch on as well. As we are planning on at this time, obviously, it would need to be approved by the board at the January of '22 board meeting for a potential bond issue of what that might look like to address the overcrowding. So I wanted to touch on that here this evening. At our next board meeting here in March, basically just the current determining the need, and some of it is reminders from when I arrived in the district, and there was discussion of a K-12 overcrowding, and we addressed the nine through 12 with the passing of J plus C, which resulted in renovations at Jeff City High School and the building of Capital City High School. I'd like to thank stakeholders for supporting that. It did address nine through 12, but we have overcrowding still at the K through eight. So what would that look like? We considered options last year, we had COVID, we hit the pause button, and so we need to continue moving forward with what that looks like. So number one, determining the need, and that's something here in March, of just the current assessment of our K through eight buildings. Of those 11 elementary schools, our two middle schools, of those 13 buildings, 13 schools, nine of those 13 have trailers that are needed for our students. You can educate kids in trailers, but it's not ideal to be premier, and so there is some overcrowding in those. So just what is that need? And we'll give an overview of that, in, not just an overview, but more specifics next month, which will be here in a couple weeks at our March board meeting. At our April board meeting, as we touched on earlier tonight during my report, with our strategic plan, with our North Star being to ensure that our kids graduate, and what that looks like with our priorities, with SMART goals and action steps from that that will be carried out through the buildings, we'll give an overview and how this ties in with that. Our facilities, as we know, in a long-range facilities plan, those are important elements of our school district and how that aligns, so we'll get an update with that as well. We'll also look at what are those initial options. You can address K through eight overcrowding in a variety of ways, we'll touch on those, and I'll just hit on, I won't get into the details, but as you look at the options, the pros and cons of each, and then the cost associated with those. You can continue adding trailers, as we have done, that is an option. Keep doing what you're doing and add trailers if you need to. You can, if you have 11 elementary schools and they're overcrowded, you could add a 12th, do you add a 13th? We can do that option and look at that. It would require a changing of boundary lines. Both our middle schools are overcrowded, you could add a third middle school. Where will it be located? What boundaries? Which high school will they go to? You'll need to weigh that. Also looking at the two new schools, adding the two, five, six buildings that we looked at last year is an option, makes then our elementary schools, which are K-5, makes them K-4 with two, five, six buildings, and then both middle schools become seven, eight. We recognize that's an extra transition year, and that is one of the negatives we recognize. Have you got to weigh the pros and cons with that as well? And then also, do you add two complete five through eight buildings? And then make your two existing middle schools that are six, eight, do we make both of those five, eight? So you weigh the pros and cons in each of those, and so we're gonna give an overview there at the April board meeting, what that looks like, the anticipated costs associated with that, and continue going forward. Next, the, through our stakeholder input and at the May board meeting, with our facilities group and what that next step looks like. We've had long-range facilities focus groups, considered options to reconvene with them, here's what we're looking at, weigh the pros and cons with them, and discuss that, and we'll give an update at our May board meeting. At our June meeting, continue meeting with groups of our current teachers, and what does that ideal model look like? We've had questions last year when we looked at the five, six option, is it gonna look more like an elementary school? Is it gonna look like, more like a middle school? And we would say, yes and yes, and we need to look at that, and what is that? And we value our staff. Just tonight, I appreciate our staff members that came forward and wants to be part of the solution, and that's exciting when we have folks that, hey, I want to be part of the solution, so we're super excited about that. Super excited about last fall when we surveyed our staff, 91% of our staff responded to that survey in the fall. That is unheard of, ask any school in America, that is unheard of. So we have a lot of folks that are, want to be part of the solution, so we're excited about that. We'll give an update to that at the June meeting. In July, kind of a draft detailed plan for what that model would look like, specifically of our departments, how the, how it flows from fifth grade to sixth grade, if it's that option, five through eight, if it's two middle schools, if you're looking at just adding trailers, like I said, is one of the first options, obviously you wouldn't have as much detail there, or if you're looking at adding a 12th elementary school, a 13th elementary school, or a third middle school, what would that look like? In August, we'd like to have a final, hey, here's what we think is the best option, after we have stakeholder input, we'll be having, those will be open, we will gather community input, and as we look at that, could we land on something by fall for what that option might be in the spring of '22? And then basically in the fall, each month of educating folks, having the round tables, the, hey, here's what, the pros and cons, educating folks what we see, but gathering input as well going forward. So that's basically the month-by-month in the fall, and we've got November, December, the stakeholder outreach meetings, outreach meetings, considering regarding intermediate and elementary for the K through eight overcrowding. So just want to give an overview of that. I'll touch on an overview of this at our March board meeting, but I will specifically of the K through eight background with more details on that coming here next month. So any specific questions on that? I know it's a high level, but I just kind of want to give an overview of, here's the plan to address, and then we'll look at that each month, and we'll make sure and educate folks along the way and kind of use the model that we were successful with the J plus C that we took in the spring of '17.
Any questions for Larry on that? Nope, okay, we will move on.
Okay.
The reconsideration of instructional material? Dr. Litzke?
We had, earlier, it was brought to us, and then Mr. Thompson, that you have a document there, wanted us consider of the instructional material included in our curriculum. Our board policy, we have our board policies through the Missouri School Boards Association, and it says to have an orderly procedure that will assure a fair hearing to those who have objections, and they'll provide a thorough investigation of any disputed materials, and to ensure that carefully considered judgments are made in response to criticism or objections. A committee of eight members was convened and a meeting conducted through a virtual meeting platform with seven members able to be in attendance. An agenda was provided during the meeting to allow time to review the process and materials. During the meeting, members reviewed the purpose and outcome goal for the committee, established guidelines for discussion, reviewed documents and information, and came to a consensus determination and recommendation based on the options provided within our policy, and I'll provide that recommendation here at the end of this. But as we look at what that looks like of the suggested supplemental resource that we do have, our curriculum was last approved for our seventh grade in 2012, and that is something that we will be looking to update and assess the current effectiveness of that and what needs to be included with that going forward. So that will be an important part of that, and I know that the committee looked at that. I believe of our staff members, and I believe Ken and Lo, you were on that committee as well, would you like to touch on an overview of what you guys looked at when you guys convened to, to look at this?
Well, I think, I mean, the report that was submitted, that you have in front of you, you know, references the fact that we did look at it, one of the, to me, the important considerations that were made were the fact that, again, this reference was not a static, it wasn't a textbook, it was a dynamic website, and that, again, was there content? I've, I've looked at it, I've re, I've continued to look at the site, I've even signed up for their, some of their newsletters to continue to look at the information that comes from it. And I think it was not a value judgment on the content, there was, was there an endorsement or an acceptance of all of the content being absolutely, you know, that, that we thought it was absolutely perfect and would, should be used, and the answer is no, but was there potential content that would be a resource for our staff? And then the next question of, you know, the, trying to be cautious and careful about starting to exclude resources that might be available to our staff. So there was not any expectation that this site would, you know, would absolutely be used by staff, it was not a mandate that it had to be used, it was a, listed as a resource. And going forward, I think the question would be, you know, whether any website necessarily is, is named specifically in our curriculum, and that answer, you know, wasn't our charge to answer that question. But ultimately, the committee decided that it wasn't appropriate to exclude and to prohibit staff from using it because there were potential, there was potential that there, there would be resources that would be appropriate for them. Just for an example, I mean, I printed off a couple of things, I mean, there's a section on there about bullying and bias and things like that. There's things about, for example, a mix-it-up-at-lunch plan, where kids are encouraged to sit with other kids that they don't normally sit with at lunch, to, you know, to make friendships and to build relationships with other kids that they might not normally hang out with. So things like that, I think, were examples of, of information that could potentially say, you could potentially say was a positive, appropriate resource.
Okay, okay. And I think an important part, and Ken alluded to it, that I think as we look at the curriculum that was last approved in, in 2012, you know, if you approve a curriculum that includes a textbook versus something that includes a website, I think we know the... the, the website, those things can change, and they can change daily. And how important of the trait that, you know, we are tolerant of others that may not have the same background, whether of socioeconomics or, or gender or race or whatever those may be, that's, of traits are important through a textbook or through a website. So I think those are important considerations that we need to look at as that curriculum is, is revamped, and we'll charge that with Shelby as our chief of learning, as they look at updating that curriculum, last being approved, I believe, in 2012. Is that correct, Shelby here, Dr. Scarborough? Okay. So the, the committee's recommendation of the, the question material, namely the website, teaching tolerance, be retained without restricting, without restrictions, but making sure that we consider those options as we revamp or update the curriculum of what that actually looks like going forward when we do re-update that curriculum and ask for your approval. So we do need approval of that per board policy, that you would take the recommendation of the committee that Ken was a part of that he referenced.
Ms. Tuford? Second. Hi.
I believe we're to close, yeah? Believe so?
Motion to suspend open to enter into the closed meeting by roll call vote pursuant to Chapter 6, 10 dot 021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. Sections 1, legal actions; 2, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate; 3, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of an employee; 13, individually identifiable personnel records; and 14, records which are protected from disclosure by law.
Will come?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Any minutes y'all need? Three?
How about it's 8:19?
How about 25? That'd be if I have any.